It's really quiet, so I'll call our board meeting to order. We do have a quorum of our board team here. We appreciate everyone being here. That covers the first item on our agenda. Our second items, our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Reverend Cherie Harris, the Senior Associate Pastor at First United Methodist Church, and she's going to lead us in our invocation. So, thank you so much for being here, Reverend Harris.
Thank you. It is very much an honor. Let us begin an attitude of prayer of thanksgiving and intercession. Gracious God, on this evening, we give you thanks, most of all, for children. They are such a gift, and they are our future. We give you thanks for each and every one of them. They can also be challenges sometimes, as we all know so well, and we love them even more when they present challenges. Gracious God, I ask you to pour out your blessing upon all those gathered here to serve you and to serve children. I ask that you grant them your wisdom to discern what is best for our children, for those who teach our children, and for our community. I ask that you give these leaders gathered here the courage to do the right thing for the children and for the community, for the future of our world. I ask that you give them energy and joy as they be about their work tonight and as they implement the decisions that they will make tonight. Gracious God, pour out your blessing upon them. Open their hearts, and I pray that your Holy Spirit will fill this room and fill their hearts so that the desires of your heart will be done, for we know that you know best, and we trust in your power that is love. We give you thanks, and we ask all of this in the name of Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. Amen.
Thank you so much. Our next items are pledges. We have four students from Bonham Elementary School who are going to lead us in our pledges. So I'll holler, I'll give you their names as they come forward. So we have Marco Flores, Emmy Hernandez, Sophie Hernandez, and Keegan Stockton. So come forward.
Nice job. Nice work.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And I told you that any parents wanted to take a picture that they could stand there just briefly, so if y'all want to come up and get a closer picture, that would be fine. It's always nice when school starts back that we have our students back to help us with our pledges, so thank y'all for being here. The next item on our agenda is, well, let me first do our script, I guess. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees, San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting, and I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be addressed and discussed at this evening's meeting will be, have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have previously been discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. Again, it's a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and in the business of our district. So, welcome. Our next item is Item 4, for anyone wishing to make public comments to our board team on items not on our agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to do that this evening? I see no one coming forward, so our next item is Item 5, the approval of our minutes.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Dindel to approve the minutes of our August meeting. We had a few meetings in August. August 1, 2016 Budget Workshop, our August 8, 2016 Special Finance and Pre-Agenda Board Workshop, our August 15, 2016 Regular Board Meeting, and our August 29, 2016 Special Meeting. Are there any comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our reports section. We are provided these as board members in our Friday facts, our student enrollment report from the 5th day of school, August 26, 2016, I think actually showed us just slightly down, and we've dropped a little bit here lately, down to around the 80 student level, but we feel pretty good about our enrollment, at least thus far. So that was one of our reports. And then we have no update on academic progress this evening, but we do have a presentation by Ms. Goodwin concerning our partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base. So at this particular time, we'll ask Teresa Goodwin to come forward, and thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Good evening. Dr. Lehman, members of the board, Dr. Detloff. I'm talking about Starbase tonight, which is a STEM project that is in the very early, very extreme beginning stages right now, and it's a partnership that we are very interested in. After its initial funding period, it would be a DOD, which is a Department of Defense-funded program. It would infuse math, science, and technology into our local school system. It would give the kids a chance to experience activities that they may not get a chance to experience inside of our walls on the base. It would be a school set up for them where they could come and take classes, science classes, math classes, technology classes. It would teach them teamwork, communication. It's, like I said, something that's in the very beginning stages, but it would be something that we would look for and work with our title ones. Any questions?
Sounds really exciting, though. So we'd have a classroom at Goodfellow?
We will have a class on the base.
On the base.
A building designed for Starbase.
And then how would we select students? Have we gotten that far?
We would have 5th graders that would be, we would infuse them to the program.
Okay. Okay. It sounds like a fabulous opportunity, so.
It would be a really remarkable opportunity for the kids. There's only three in Texas, and they're in the big cities. So we have Austin, San Antonio, and Houston. I'll be going to Austin and San Antonio this week.
That's good. So other questions from the board team? Thanks for bringing that to us. That's so exciting. Any questions, Emmy?
Mr. Lehman, may I add today?
Yes, certainly.
This is another just great example of our partnership, even though it's in the exploratory phase now, thanks to the work of Ms. Goodwin, Ms. Hanson, Colonel Downs, Colonel Ganster, Shelley, Hullahan, and others. We are looking at the options for this. There's a potential of designated space already on Goodfellow Air Force Base that we would have a little bit of maybe reconstruction or repurposing, and we also have, again, looked at 5th grade students for the opportunity to do this, and we think not only is it, does it hit on math, science, engineering, et cetera, but it also provides a great catalyst for our community and kids to possibly look at service in the military as a career option down the road as well. So, again, it just helps our awareness for kids and us, and at the same time, really sends the message that, you know, Goodfellow Air Force Base has these skilled technicians and masters in math and education willing to help our students, so we're excited about this potential partnership.
Thank you so much.
Lanny?
Yes.
I was just going to say that Max and I went to that class last year in Austin, and it was really interesting, and then my son took it last year, that STEM class, he took it last year, and he really loves that class. In fact, one of the projects they did, they had to make a bridge out of newspapers and to see how many, I think it was the math books, it could hold, and his team won because the bridge was able to hold 15 books. So it was pretty interesting, and he really loves that.
Thanks, Art. I appreciate those comments, and certainly a great opportunity, again, for our students, and we appreciate the cooperation of our fine folks and friends at Goodfellow, especially if they're going to help fund it. We appreciate it even that much more, so thank you. Our consent items, you can tell that Max did our consent, our board planning. We have consent items A through M. Do we have a motion to approve items A through M?
Move to approve items A through M.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos.
Can you make sure I pay attention?
That's good. To approve our consent items, and as Mr. Gallegos is referring, you know, we just had a meeting last week, and all of these items are always discussed in full detail at that particular timeframe. So I'll read these off, just so everyone will know the items that we have on our consent agenda. The first one's consider donations. We appreciate the community's support in the donations that are provided to the school district. Item B is to consider our quarterly investment report ending August 31 of 2016. Item C is to consider our annual portfolio report. Again, that's our annual investment portfolio report ending August 31 of 2016. Item D is to consider campus police officer's pay rate. Item E is to consider a firm to appeal the state comptroller's annual property value study. Item F is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for the school year 2016-2017. Item G is to consider extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and adjunct faculty agreement with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service of the Tom Green County. Item H is to consider certified T-test appraisers. Item I is to consider bid number 16-020 for paper towels and toilet tissue. Item J is to ratify the administration's action in the sale of properties. These are properties that we sell in conjunction with the city or county that are delinquent on taxes, not actual property that the district owns. Item K is to consider deactivation of a previously granted authority to operate a school district police department. Item L is to consider Tasby's Board Policy Update 105, and Item M is to consider Tasby Board Update 106. And again, all these items were discussed previously in our board agenda workshop, as well as materials provided in each one of our board packets. Do we have any questions or comments about any of the items A through M? Any public comment? Okay, all in favor of our consent items A through M, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 8 on our board agenda, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of August 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for August 2016. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning this particular item?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to our viewers that in our effort at transparency, we provide all of these reports online. You go to our website, saisd.org, and click on the Transparency tab right in the middle of the page.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Archer, for that reminder. So, anyone who wants to look into what's going on, on a day-to-day basis and an item-by-item basis in the school district, feel free to go out to our website and look for that information. Do we have any other board comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider a historical marker for the Little Olympics. Dr. Detloff, I have your name by that.
Yes. Last week, Jana Anderson visited with our board team about San Angelo Kiwanis. Little Olympics has been operating in San Angelo and San Angelo Stadium for over 75 years, and the San Angelo Kiwanis is wanting to have a historical marker placed at San Angelo Stadium, and I'm not sure if there's a representative here this evening. Would you like to come up and tell us about that? Thank you.
I'm Carol Atkins, president-elect of the Kiwanis Club, and Jana Anderson couldn't be here tonight. She's out of town, so I'm going to substitute for her. Events that have been held for over 30 years can be recognized by the Texas Historical Commission, and the San Angelo Kiwanis Club has held the Little Olympics for 75 years. We are applying for a historical marker to be placed at San Angelo Stadium where most of the Little Olympics have been held. A historical marker would commemorate an undertold piece of San Angelo history. It'd be visible to thousands who attend sporting events at the stadium and would offer recognition to the Kiwanis Club for hosting this event that's touched and will continue to touch thousands of children in San Angelo and the surrounding communities. If approved by the Texas Historical Commission, our club would need permission of the property owner to place the marker, and the cost of the application and the marker will be paid by the Kiwanis Club.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Do we know where we're going to locate it?
We have an idea.
Okay.
We would like it in, there's a small rock garden inside of Gate 1 where it could be placed on a post. It can be placed on a post, or it could be mounted on a wall, but we saw that rock area inside the gate and thought that would be the most visible place for it.
That's good. Yeah. Thank God. I knew that I ran in the Little Olympics, so it's been around a long time, so.
Gerard claims that he was a chinning champion, so. Okay, well, thanks.
I think it's a great idea, and we, you just need our approval in order to.
We'll need your signature and a proof of ownership.
Okay. All right. So, any board comments or questions?
Where's Gate 1?
Gate 1's on the, yeah, on the northwest side. Yeah. Yeah.
We'd like a motion that you approve the submission of the application.
I make a motion to submit the application by the Kiwanis Club to add a historical landmark, correct?
Marker.
At San Angelo Stadium.
Second.
Thanks, Gerard. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker. Any further board comment or questions? Any public comment? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks so much for bringing that to us. What a great idea. I'm reminded, probably shouldn't mention this, but well, I had an old uncle that used to call them, instead of historical markers, he called them hysterical markers, you know, so. Maybe just because we had a bunch of them at one particular time. Item 10 is to consider class size waivers for 2016-2017. Mr. Kimball.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, board members, and Dr. Detloff. The Texas Education Code requires the school districts to conduct a class-size enrollment survey for kindergarten through 4th grade. During the first two weeks of school, we met every day, looked at our enrollment numbers, and since then, every Monday, we get updated numbers that we study. If a classroom exceeds the 22-to-1 ratio, the district must have board approval to submit a waiver request to the Texas Education Agency. For example, last year, we came to you and requested and received approval for waivers of nine classrooms across five campuses in our district. We are extremely pleased to share with you that currently, we only have two campuses that have a camp, one classroom each, that has exceeded the 22-to-1 student-to-teacher ratio in grades kindergarten through 4th grade. We're extremely fortunate to have a strong enrollment, and we're confident in our staffing projections, knowing that many districts our size far exceed this ratio and request many more waivers. Each of the two classrooms only exceeded the 22-to-1 ratio by one student each, so that's great news, and based on the most incumbent enrollment, we are proud of our overall average student-to-teacher ratio, 18.3 students per classroom in kindergarten through 4th grade. And that obviously does great benefits for student achievement across our district. I especially want to acknowledge Dr. Bright, his staff, Patty Griffin, our executive directors and principals, for a lot of work that they put in to get our staffings just right, to make sure that we get the teachers in the right places and that we meet those student needs on our campuses. They've done an outstanding job to allow us to keep this waiver request down to two classrooms.
Thanks, Mr. Kimball. Questions or comments? Certainly no small task, and takes a considerable amount of planning and some luck, you know, to make sure that we have the right number of students show up at each campus, but I think Jeff, and especially his team, has done a great job with staffing ratios historically, so thanks to Dr. Bright. Mr. Parker?
Well, and Mr. Kimball works on that, too, on the working with the staffing ratios, so I commend you, but I want to make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendations for class-size waivers as presented.
Second. Thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindel to approve the two class-size waivers as presented by Mr. Kimball. Questions or further comments from our board team?
Mr. Kimball, in similar districts our size in this area, we're very fortunate to have one of the lower ratios of these classrooms as presented today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 11, Consider Head Start and Early Head Start Implementation Plan Updates for School Year 2016-2017, and Ms. Taunton's here to help us with that. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Just a couple of quick items that I have on the implementation plan. There were some revisions that were made in Program Design and Management's Part D, Human Resource Management, which is 130452. They have added in writing some procedures that we already have in place. We have, we follow these procedures, but now they are in writing. They're found on Page 5 of your, of your section of the implementation plan, and they're highlighted in yellow. We do personal unemployment references. We verify those. Our interviews are conducted with potential employees. Recommendation letters are submitted for approval to hire from the executive director, that's COG, to their executive director. We still have to get approval from Kathy Bennett. We submit childcare licensing requests for background checks, and we also have potential employees sign a document stating that they will not be considered for permanent employment until the policy committee and the board have approved them. And then we also add any new employees to our currently, to our current monthly criminal record check tracking that we submit to COG. Those are things that we have been doing for a while, but they are in writing, and that's the change that they've added, is they've put it in writing. The other change is in early childhood development and health services, Subpart B, Child Health and Development Services, which is 130420. They added on Page 11 for hearing and vision screenings, we use the Pure Tone Audio Meter, and they've added that we can use other state-approved equipment as well. And they added this because as a SAISD, we purchased some equipment for our health coordinator and our nurse to conduct some of these hearing and vision screens for our children, and they did have training on how to use the equipment, and so they added that, just so that we would be in compliance, and those are the only two changes.
Any questions or comments concerning Ms. Taunton's presentation?
Need a motion?
Go for it.
So move to approve.
Second.
Presentation.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Hernandez. Do we have any further board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Rachel. We appreciate that. That's a really short synopsis of about 80 pages worth of board work, so thank you. Thank you for your continued hard work with our team. Oh, I was going to ask you a question on the hiring. How we doing with personnel? I mean, as far as.
Are teachers there? We just hired our last one. We're waiting for her to finish her requirements, our training, and CPR, first aid, and.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That concludes our board meeting this evening, except, and we'll adjourn after I make the announcements, but we're going to conduct a bus tour and view a number of things that we, the board's tasked itself with improving, or our current improvements that are in place are being worked on currently, and then also items that we wanted to address with our, with dollars that the district has in our fund balance, and we're going to have that tour this afternoon, this evening. So we'll take that as a board group. We are together and following the bus trip, and we will adjourn our meeting, or I will adjourn that on the bus if someone wants to go to make sure that we follow proper procedures and protocol. But we will, because we're together as a board team, we have to make sure that we include that on our agenda and that we. that on our agenda and that we also, part of our trip is, we are to conduct ourselves as a board while we're on that trip, so we can't necessarily talk about any specific items that have been on our agenda this evening, other than the fact that we're looking at capital projects while we're on that trip. Announcements, item 13 on our agenda, we have TASA and Tasby Convention. That starts actually on Friday. We're leaving on Thursday afternoon at noon. So if you miss your ride at noon, maybe someone else can bring you down there, so. So we've got a couple of, we have a couple of, we have a couple of vehicles, district vehicles reserved for us, so we'll travel down. It's a great opportunity for us as a board team to do our continuing education and also kind of rub elbows with a lot of other school boards and find out, you know, what's going on in, around the state as far as, so we do that at the TASA-Tasby Convention on a regular basis. This year, it's in Houston. I personally wish it was a little closer, but they didn't ask us. So we'll be there Friday and Saturday, and we'll return Saturday after our delegate meeting. And thanks again to Amy and Gerard for agreeing to serve as delegates for San Angelo Independent School District. Our second announcement is Finance and Bridge into Workshop. That's scheduled for October 10 at our normal meeting time, 5:45. And then our regular board meeting in October is scheduled for October 17, again at 5:45. So that covers our announcements, unless we have any others than any board member might have. And also, I would ask any board members if they have any items that they would like to place on a future agenda. Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward with our meeting and get on a bus and have a tour.